Stand for the invocation, Commissioner Nicholson's going to lead us, please.
That's great. Much gracious, Assemblyman Fodle, we thank you again for a beautiful day you blessed us with. Lord, just thank you for the rain. Lord, just ask you to be with us now, lead, guide, and direct us as we conduct this county business. May everything we do be pleasing to you, Lord. Lord, just ask you to be with those these law loved ones. Lord, just have you give them peace in their heart. Lord, be with those of us who are going through injuries right now. We just lift up Commissioner Minn Hall to you, we're just speaking human over him, Lord. We thank you for everything you do, and we ask forgiveness for your failure. In Jesus' name I pray, amen.
Amen. Stand for the pledge.
Pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic from which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, limited to the barest of things, and just as thou knowest.
All right. Now I'm going to ask for approval of the agenda from my board.
Making a motion to approve?
Second.
Are all those in favor?
Aye.
Do you need to do the same?
Yeah, we'll call our meeting to order and need to motion to adopt the agenda from the Board of Commissioners. Got a second? Okay, all in favor? Chairman Cox?
All right. So the first item here is the presentation of the Board of Education's budget request.
And as we begin with the current expense budget, I'd like to ask this more, as she always does, to come and present that to us as she goes through it for us. This is more.
No, just yeah, just kind of so we can get you the microphone so we can hear. Yeah.
Okay, I know you all, we see the analyzed budget up here, once the Board of Education approved the budget. It may include my line of line, which showed our requests from the previous year that were in the mail, and our actual due requests and any increases and decreases. And in summary, that request was seventeen million, one seventy-five, nine fifty-five. And that was actually an increase of two million, one ninety-three, nine seventy-eight over the current year. County manager's recommendation at this time is fifteen million, one twenty-nine, and ninety-nine. And that is a decrease from the request of the Board of Education, a two million, forty-six thousand, eight hundred and fifty-six dollars. So the concern, I guess, that what we actually have would be where they know how many we come from. In the budget request that was submitted, our board did have actually like nine new requests. And those new requests actually came to like six hundred and five thousand, nine hundred and six dollars. So there would be something new that we have not been actually operating with. Your current expense budget, basically, you know, is an operating budget. So the concern would be if you hit the board, and I'm saying if they decide to cut all the new requests, that would mean a million, four hundred and forty thousand, nine hundred and fifty dollars yet would have to be cut from the operating line that we currently have at our current level. And as you look over this budget, place the grade, the salaries and benefits, our utilities, and some of our operational costs actually make up eighty-six percent. So we actually put in salary increases based on what we're hearing estimated from the state. We included a five percent for certified and a two and a half percent for classified. And also, in the last legislation, it was funded that fifteen dollars per hour would be the minimum wage for our classified employees. I was on a webinar today, and they're still saying to a budget sign, that's not a definite, but we have included that in this just in case because we're thinking that's going to happen. And just that along with additional sixty thousand dollars, just to operate with fifteen dollars.
You say fifteen dollars even?
Fifteen dollars is what they're recommending as the minimum, yes.
I'll tell you, that has been something that's been debated. When I talked to Kyle Hall, he said, "It's a done deal. That part is done, that there are going to be a minimum of fifteen dollars." When we talk to DPI, they say, "Probably." So we're still waiting until we have final approval of that before we do it. But all indications are that we are required to do the fifteen dollars an hour this year unless something changes.
And I will say that in this budget includes the five percent supplement, and I know this board helped make an additional percentage, you know, this increase that last year, and then our board added some additional fund balance to make that happen to go to five percent. We have included a five percent supplement, which actually would benefit some of our cost to be in three seventy-nine, seven fifteen. So basically, that's maintaining where we were. One of the areas we're concerned about, when we actually presented the budget to the Board of Education, we actually figured the fuel, like, for example, at three ninety-eight, thinking that we might be a little high at the time. But as you all know with society, where we are now, with inflation and everything, we're concerned that that might need to be increased a little bit. So we figured propane at three seventy-five and our fuel at three ninety-eight. With that along, it made our budget go up almost three hundred and fifty thousand dollars. The other area we've been concerned, and it's going to hit this budget this year, would be our state transportation, which is also operating our yellow buses, and the cost of fuel there. We did receive fifty-some thousand additional money for fuel costs, and that is all. Right now, it looks like that we will be over three hundred and fifty, two hundred and seventy-five thousand. We budgeted three hundred thousand in this year's budget, but it looks like we will be over that much. And in the budget that you have, we have increased that to seven hundred thousand, and I do think that's a good figure based on what we're seeing this year. So I'm just kind of going over some of the areas that you will see as you go through the line item as to why they are increased. Another area that we had to increase was our resource officers. In the past, we have used state at-risk funding, our grant allotment in Dalm, and some of the years we've had some carryover money there, and this year there will not be the carryover. So we had, that forced us then to actually budget that back to our local current expense. So we are asking for two hundred and thirty thousand, five eighty-two, just to maintain the coverage that we have there as well. I know some of you have questions sometimes about if your ADM is going down, then why can't your local budget not go down? So in the last, I don't know history, no, the last ten years, we've lost like a thousand, four hundred and some kids in that range. But what happens is, the state doesn't allow our money, for example, aside. It's like we're under one umbrella. And when we lose students, they're not necessarily at one location. You might lose a student at one school, and another one over to another. That doesn't affect what you need as far as a teacher or their supplies and this kind of thing. So I just want to explain a little bit about the ADM, and it doesn't necessarily mean that we can make cuts. But with our ninth month ADM report, we were increased twenty-five students. That just came out, so that's a good thing, maybe we're going to look like direction. The other area I want to mention, I know some of you have questioned code, but we've actually received seventeen million, nine sixty-three, oh forty-eight. And I notice people think, "Why can't that be used for some of this operating budget?" When we receive those allotments, just like when you all receive them, they're restricted. You get a summary of what it can be spent for, and you get codes what it can be spent for. There's a lot of supplanted issues. So basically, those funds have been used for cleaning supplies, some custodians, a lot of technology. It has really helped us with technology, but when we were having to do online technology, we had to do a lot of new things, so that helped us in those areas. We have had some health physicians, some maintenance physicians. There was bonus pay included in some of this that we didn't, or the board didn't just decide that it was to come along with the money. Textbooks, we've used money for special needs, and also some water coolers recently. So we are restrictive on what those funds can be used for. But now I want to talk about fund balance, because I know that's something that you all are interested in as well. The May had the audit for June thirty to twenty-one. The audit showed that we had two million, six eighty-one, four oh seven unassigned. When our board balanced the budget that we're in this year, they used three fourteen, eight sixty-eight to balance the budget. So that brought it down to two million, three sixty-six. And then just recently, based on, and the board can get into this, the need, they have wanted to try to get some first responders through the wait rooms, and they were saying they would use seventy-five thousand fund balance to appropriate that, so that would break down to like two million, two ninety-one. When we presented this budget to you all, we did not include any fund balance to balance the budget. So by doing that with County manager's recommendation, Joan, you can say, I'm figuring it. It's four hundred and sixty-one thousand, nine hundred and ninety dollars additional county funding that you all are recommending at this time from where we're at now. That's kind of summary, and also a lot. Dr. Rice, anything you want to add?
Well, just the main thing I'd like to highlight real quick is, part of it is how we get our stuff, how we get our process to our budget the way that it is. One, we look at where we currently are, what we current, our current operating expense and what we currently have. Then, we try to say, "What do we need to make things better for our students?" That's where the new request came in. We've talked in the past about how we lose some teachers to surrounding counties. A big part of that happens in the last four years. Your retirement's based on your last four years, and so if you go to another county and get a supplement increase those last four years, that will change your salary and retirement for as long as you live. It could be five years or thirty years or a hundred years if you're really lucky. And so one thing we looked at was an additional supplement for people in those last four years. We talked about athletic directors. Again, trying to compete, most athletic directors are eleven or twelve months. So we were looking at adding an extra month for them. That's something our high school principals said, you know, we've lost some really good ones recently to surrounding counties. A new maintenance position, a principal mentor position with all the new principals we've had. And so when those requests come in, we vet them and we weed out a lot of them. But the new request that we had was about six hundred thousand. Everything else that's an increase in this budget is just inflation, basically. So where, we all know that gas costs more this year than it did last year. Our electric bills are higher, all of that stuff with heating oil and all that, everything that goes into it. The bulk of this increase, one point four million, one million, four hundred and forty thousand, ninety-four dollars, is just inflation to stay whole with what we have today. Now, as she said, eighty percent of our budget is operating in salaries. If the Board of Commissioners says, "Well, that's not, figure out how to tighten your belt," that basically is twenty-eight positions. So if you think of Stokes County schools minus twenty-eight positions, that's teachers, assistant principals, social workers that we've just been able to add recently, nurses, stuff that's going to directly affect kids and the quality of education in Stokes County. So while it looks like a huge request, and it is, I mean, I, my granddad used to say, "Well, two million dollars just rolls right off the tongue." But I realize that is a lot of money, but one point four million of this is just in inflation. And so I want to make sure that that's recognized as we go forward.
And the ones that Dr. Rice has mentioned there till last, that is the new request that I referred to earlier. That's the six hundred and five new request that we've not had to fill this way. Any other questions?
I don't think, I don't have any at this time. Yeah, I mean, we may touch back on some of this stuff. Is anybody else got, I don't know if we've got any questions right now.
Go ahead. I was just going to, have y'all lost any positions, like at the end of this school year that you know of that's not going to be replaced for next year?
Yes, that's the other thing. When she says that in our local budget, we do fund a few positions, I mean, there's no doubt about that. But where the ADM hit, really hits us from our state budget, because that's teacher positions. And so we've already had to cut ten positions, but we're looking at two to four more if we get the right resignations to match just the state cuts that we're facing. Because that's where the ADM cut really hits us, is in the teaching positions. So we're already looking at twelve to fourteen cuts this year, and we've already made ten of those.
So that's probably through retirement, is that correct?
That's correct. This is through attrition, people that have quit to take another job in another county or retirement. I think that we have not fired anyone, we've not laid anyone off at this point. And that's why we're waiting on those last two to four cuts, just to see, you know, where those come and if they work out in a spot where we can make a cut.
So you had to get to a position where you've already had to fire somebody?
We've not, we've not laid anyone off yet.
But the one point four million will get us into that position.
Yes, if we have to cut another one point four, there's no doubt, there will be lots of cuts across the board.
One other thing I need to mention too, Dr. Rice, make sure you agree. We have been operating this year with free meals with our special education program. And, you know, they operate on their own. That will get probably back to us locally, because we're being told, and a lot of people are protesting that, that they will be charged for their meals, and which they have received a lot of reimbursement by them not making parents pay when they found the reimbursement, so the reimbursement will be less. That is a concern that that might come back to us locally, hit our fund balance. So we just have to wait and see what happens with that, but that is another concern that we have.
We know that meal prices are going, we've had to increase our meal prices at the last budget meeting. We know our meal costs are going up dramatically, and a lot of that, again, has to do with the shipping cost. The cost of the food's going up, but the shipping cost is going up incredible amounts by the box. And so, and we've not passed all of that on to the students yet. Again, we did go up to what, we're afraid if we put all, the whole cost to them, nobody would eat anyway, because it would just jack up the price too much.
The cost of delivery per case tripled. Well, what's it, you have to have that one forty-five, so it almost tripled, two and a half times. I did, ma'am, Sharon, thanks. All right, it's one point four million inflation, is a lion's share of that energy cost, or would you say it's more other things besides that?
Well, it's the increase in salaries that we've given, because when the state mandated us go to fifteen dollars an hour, that hit us in a lot of these positions that are paid by local salaries, that, which also increases retirement, which also increases all the, all the stuff that we have to pay, the social security, retirement, insurance, all of that. It also affects the supplement. And then with the other, the energy cost, all that goes up as well. So between salaries and energy cost is the bulk of that. Now, our insurance is also going up, our cybersecurity insurance is going up with all the attacks. Everything that we do is going up.
Well, Ned, you said something about the, the minimum wage thing going to fifteen dollars costs sixty thousand?
Just for local, I just, because then we pay right at close to a hundred positions from current expense. Not all of those though are actually classified, most of them are, about ninety would be. So that's like sixty-some thousand just to give them to the fifteen dollars per hour.
Okay.
Yeah.
Last year it went to thirteen, and this year it's moved to fifteen.
So it's not just local positions, this other ones?
It's going to be, it's going to, but we're hoping the state allotments will increase to cover that, for people paid from state. This would include only those that are actually paid for local funds at this time.
Did you review the fund balance stuff you said again? I didn't quite follow all that when you were going through it.
We, the audit said had.
Two million, six hundred and eighty-one?
Six eighty-one, four oh seven.
Current expense fund balance?
Current expense fund balance, unassigned.
Okay.
Okay, when we balanced the budget that we're in now, the board decided.
Does that mean unrestricted to, unassigned and unrestricted to?
Yes, it means it can be appropriated.
Okay, okay.
The other side, then, our board put in three fourteen, eight sixty-eight.
That was to make the supplement to go five percent.
And that was two million, three sixty-six. Then, at the board meeting the other night, they have decided they would want to look at more of the wait rooms to make a brand in some first responders.
The athletic trainers.
That is seventy-five thousand. If so, that would have to balance, so that was down to two million, two ninety-one. Right now, we're running close on our budget for this year. We might have between a hundred, two hundred maybe left from the budget we're in now, depending whether we get another allotment from the state.
You'll spend all that two million except for a couple hundred thousand?
No, 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 this is still out there.
Okay.
This is still there.
Okay.
It's just, I'm talking about what we budget, when we put in the three hundred and what you all approve, we'll probably spend all of that except between a hundred to two hundred thousand.
So we should start the year with around two point two million. Unassigned fund balance.
One last question, then I'll let somebody else. Could you explain the COVID money, the categories of COVID money that you have? And then what's been spent and what's not spent yet? Just to kind of give us an idea of how that could be used, or if we've exhausted every, every way of using that?
We started in twenty twenty-one school year, and the first allotment that we received was from state funds. And I'm just coming down to get down some of the different titles, and it kind of helps decide how we spend it and I can get into the detail.
Okay.
We had money for summer learning, we had non-digital resources, we had student computers and devices, we had money for school nutrition, we had, it was for personnel, computers and devices, home and community wifi, except for children's program, lower wealth supplemental funds, cybersecurity and personal protective equipment. All of that was like a million, five hundred and ninety-five thousand. Then we come along and we had more state funds, which was related to COVID. We've done Chromebooks, cases, webcams, iPads, licenses, access points, swirled online subscriptions, and that was like four hundred and eleven thousand. Cyber benefits, we've done some custodial in school nutrition, and extended here, which we liked for our summer program, nine hundred and sixty-eight thousand, rounding those figures off. Then we bought stuff like bleach, sanitizer, stations, sprayers, disinfectant, gloves, batteries, and all of that. That's six hundred and fifteen. So that all was part of that million, five ninety-five. Then we got in and we received the Caris Act money.
That was part of the five, one, five ninety-five?
Yes, all of that was included in that.
Okay.
Then we received allotments, what they call the Caris Act. And we had custodial salaries there, and I will go ahead and say to you, while we moved some custodial salaries from state funds, moved clerical from local to state to allow these custodians to be paid here, and that's why we had the fund balance that we did. This was not a supplanted allotment. So had it not been that we actually were kind of creative and done what we done, we would not have had that fund balance. So that's what made that happen, and the fact that we didn't have to worry about supplanted on that particular PRC. We also received an allotment like, that was a million, one hundred and eighteen thousand. We received an allotment, forty-one thousand again for Brain Pop, which is a technology software. We learned, received learning management system, we locked software called Canvas, it's used in our schools, almost twenty-six thousand, except for children's program, sixty thousand, and that was for extended learning and the salaries. ICAERS, we had two hundred thousand, that's where we helped, the YMCA was contracted, they come in, we did some max tutoring, after-school program, and they included some contracted services with life skills. All of the CAAERS Act money then came to a million, four forty-six. Then we received what they call the GEAR, G E R, government's emergency education relief. That student health support, we got a hundred and sixty-nine thousand there. We employ counselors, nurses, psychologists, and school workers, and in that category, they could be contracted or employees. And we also received from instructional supplies for summer enrichment of seventy thousand dollars. So rounding off that came right at two hundred and forty thousand. Then we received ESRM, which is the elementary secondary school emergency relief fund. We received four million, one hundred and forty thousand, that was for bonus pay, textbooks, LEP tutoring, director of academic and emotional support, we actually hired a physician there. We done a lot with technology as far as smart boards and Chromebooks. We spent a lot of money in those areas and upgraded what needed to be done there. We received supplemental contract of thirty-seven thousand. We contracted for some health supplemental, and basically that included health regiels of social, and had to be a contract service, but I actually already. School infringement retention bonus, for those that were out there when COVID was so bad, serving those meals even to the community, if you remember, people could go buy and get their meals, that was forty thousand. Learning loss was another one, hundred and seventy-one thousand. Summer career accelerator program, we had salaries and benefits, again, from grade six through twelve for learning loss, hundred and eighteen. Compensate based assessment, this was an online assessment for K through eight reading and math, again, learning loss, thirty-two thousand. We received a K-12 and work to some refund. This is where we done salary benefits for LEP tutoring, social workers, guidance, technology assistance, maintenance physicians, and at the time, our board included, and they had budgeted for window replacements, that's not been completed as of yet. They looked at air purification, that's actually out there, that has not been completed yet. We did the touchless water coolers, we have a lot of summer learning again, and we done a lot of tutoring. And then in that category, the state wanted training bonuses. That actually came to nine million, two hundred and ninety thousand dollars. So the total ESR is like thirteen million, eight twenty-seven. Then we received ARP, the American Rescue Plan, Illinois Secondary School allotments, homeless. We received thirty-three thousand dollars. What they call the IDEA grant, three hundred and thirty-seven. This was to continue and expand our special education program for ages three through twenty-one. Our IDEA preschool program, thirty-five thousand, is again was for preschool for ages three through five. Cyber bullying and suicide prevention, fifty-eight thousand. Contract services, so this for cyber bullying, monitoring student internet activity, monitoring classroom devices, and assistance with suicide retention services. GAVL, that's a type of technology that we use for like cyber bullying and monitoring internet activities, about eighteen thousand. Training bonus for teachers and instructional support, when I say instructional support, that's talking about your guidance, your media positions. All of, they had to do certain trainings, and those trainings had to be COVID related. That was three hundred and seventy-one thousand. Then we received some additional money for driver's training, and the reason we received that, which was just like fifteen hundred dollars, it was to help with the backlog that happened due to COVID. So the federal ARP was like eight hundred and fifty-one, eight hundred and fifty-three thousand dollars. So all of that together is how it would come up with a seventeen million, nine sixty-three. But all of this had to be related to COVID in order to expand it, so we have to prove that. That's the reason that we had these expenditures was due to COVID.
Were they non-recurring expenditures, all of them?
Yes, yes.
Well, no, the money's not recurring.
Non-recurring.
But some of the, like, when we hired personnel, we know that at the end of three years, the money's going to go away. We'll have to get rid of that personnel. So there are expenditures that could be reoccurring, but the money is, is not.
It's not yet.
Some of our grants will be running out this September, and then some of them go to twenty-three, twenty-four, some of the funding will. But it still will be used for the areas we've mentioned.
And that's one reason that we allocated the money. We did, we tried to limit the amount of, like, personnel we purchased with it, because we knew that the money would end. And so we tried not to make that, because when people get used to stuff, it's hard to cut them off later. But, but there were some needs that we did do that with, especially when we looked at, like, social emotional needs of students, where a lot of kids went through a lot of rough time with the lack of socialization, being home, the families losing their job and that. So we have invested in extra counselors right now at our schools. We know that money is going away. That was a short-term fix, but we thought that the need was so great that we did do that. But we, we've tried to limit the amount of personnel that we did with it and purchased the, that's why we purchased Chromebooks, purchased the interactive panels to help us with online delivery during the time when we were doing hybrid instruction, and that allowed us to refresh our technology. And so that's one of the things that's less in our budget now, is technology, because we were able to use the ESR funds for that. But a lot of it had to be so much, it was so tightly earmarked for ESR needs, we couldn't use it for other things in our budget.
How much is left? You got some more left to do, spend?
We do, we have until twenty twenty-three to spend it.
Twenty, yes, twenty-three, twenty-four, and some of it will run out. The biggest majority that will be left is in the ESRC one eighty-one, and really, that's the back, the only allotment that this board has really had their say, because we did have a little bit more flexibility there. And that's where I went into the fact that we, they had talked about the coolers and the board approved that. The window replacement, which, like I said, they have approved, but have not done any of that yet. So the air purification, they did actually have some say in what they could do there, because that was one we did not have to worry about supplanted. So the rest of, the board's not really had much choice.
All of the money at this point has been allocated, but not all of it has been spent. And the reason we have not done that yet is if a greater need comes up that fits in the category, the board could choose to reallocate that money to meet a more pressing need. But all of it has been allocated at this time. But all of it has been allocated at this time.
Yes, it has. And we have been told we will be allocated very closely on, on these funds. So I'm expecting a, an allotment from the state federal as well as our local.
One expense we did incur was as we rolled out a lot of technology and we brought a lot of technology on board trying to, trying to play coby ketchup. Uh, we employed, we brought tech services and tech support back in-house. Uh, we reached out to Forsytec, tried to employ some younger generation with the understanding. And they knew coming in, they were a three-year program. It was a resume builder and gave them firsthand experience. And we had made the attempt to hire local to support Stokes County. But those funds will expire in three years. But we felt like after three years, we should have all the Chromebooks understood, all the smart panels understood, all the training installation, startup support will be taken care of in that first three-year gap. The reason I ask these questions, just kind of hard to get your head around this one-time money versus our normal operating budget and figuring out how one impacts the other.
That's the other key to it.
Do I?
People don't understand how restrictive they are.
Yeah.
You just don't have a lot of flexibility with it.
Well, and while some of it they said was, you know, up to our board to decide, then the general assembly came in and said, and this is how you'll do summer school. You'll do it this many days a week, you'll pay this amount, you'll make it for this many weeks. All, and so all of that was then an unfunded mandate, they said, and now you sure ESER funds for it. So then we had to reallocate where we had already planned to use it for something, to use it for an unfunded mandate for summer school last year, which was about twice as long and about twice as large as we've ever done before.
Nice question, then I'll stop and let somebody else. Does your fund balance show up in these sheets you handed out on one of these pages, like revenue page?
No, no. Well, if you go back to the revenue page, you'll see we did not appropriate any fund balance. This is what we appropriated, and I took that off earlier. But right now, this board has not appropriated any fund balance. We were basically coming to see how things look with the county unit.
Okay.
The board will have an empty seat.
Okay. Um, anybody else got anything right now, or we want to keep rolling? Mr. Mitten Hall, do you have any comments or questions right now, or do you want us to keep going?
Uh, thank you, Madam Chairman. Um, I have a list of things here, but, um, what I'd like to do, if it's okay with you, Madam Chair, is to give each person, I know we normally allocate, uh, allocate time for all the board of education members to make comments and all the county commissioners. I know Commissioner Morris has asked a few questions and Commissioner, uh, Nicklestone. However, if it's okay with you, I'd like to run through the whole gamut. And then if it's okay with you, Madam Chair, I'd like to come up at the rear and, and, uh, ask a few questions and make some comments.
That'll be fine. So you want to ask some of your questions now?
Um, we are definitely dealing, uh, with the current.
Yeah, yes.
Frankly, yeah.
We're on current right now.
I have some on current, some on capital. And I'm sure, I'm sure everybody's going to have some on capital. But, uh, I would like, and I know that, um, our, our board of education realized this, what I'm getting ready to say, uh, because they're all familiar with this, they're very familiar with it. And they're on the board and their expertise is in that area. However, I do want to just make sure, um, of three or four things, Madam Chair, that I want to re-echo to our, uh, services of Stokes County. Um, you know, after the Pine Hall meeting, and this was in between, after I got out of the hospital, after my five-day stay in the hospital with my, uh, heart situation, got some calls on the Pine Hall issue. And also got, actually got some visits and, uh, from both parents, grandparents, teachers. And I just want to re-echo a couple of things because, uh, some of these people felt like we were sort of the bad guy after this. But I want to re-echo two or three things right now. They talked about the American Rescue Plan. And, um, I actually am very fortunate, being a former superintendent and principal. I, I know where to go to get all this information. So I already had down the seventeen million nine hundred and sixty-three thousand forty-eight dollars down. Um, and I knew, I know how that is restricted. Uh, and you have to use it for certain items, just like we do our eight point eight million in the county level. However, I do want to re-echo to all the people in Stokes County that when the county commissioners give their money to the school system, whether it's current or capital, the school system, the board of educa, the board of education, they have the right to spend that on anything they want to. We cannot dictate to them. But we cannot dictate to the board of education what to spend it on. And I had several people come in and comment on that after the Pine Hall issue. Um, and, um, I would say that, you know, on the recommended budget of Shannon was forty-nine million one hundred and eighteen thousand seven hundred and eighty-two dollars. And we'll get into this further and I don't, that's one reason I just want to hold off. But, um, I got, I, I had Shannon do also a ten-year printout. Um, our current expense requests from the board, current, and then our recommendation, and then what the final amount was from the year twenty-twelve thirteen budget to the year twenty-twenty-one twenty-two budget. Shannon's got a copy of that that I've asked her to have on hand and pass out to all the commissioners and all the board of education members and any citizens present to show where we have, uh, increased a tremendous amount, several million dollars in, in the current. And, um, and also, um, I did not get to go to that meeting. I, I have had some severe health issues and I, and I apologize for having to go with the call-in. Uh, it's certainly not something I'm wanting to have to deal with. But, um, uh, for the gentleman that addressed me, what I wore to a meeting at Sandbridge, that was not a county commissioner meeting. And I know who you are. And, uh, you know, I don't sit around and address what other people wear. So I appreciate, now, if you, uh, this young man, I know he, uh, would not address my clothing now, but I've been quite sick. And I don't think he realizes how sick I've been. So I'm just trying to get through this, uh, budget session. But Sonia?
Yes.
You've on the board how long?
Fifteen and a half years.
When we, uh, when the commissioners gave us the money, at that point, we were able to spend the money as we deserved. Is that not correct?
That's correct.
Yeah. So I want everybody in Stokes County to know that when we allocate, whatever we allocate to the board, and I'm going to tell you, when Shannon hands out, I'm going to ask Shannon to hand this out here in a few minutes. And see, and it shows how much of an increase from the twenty-seventeen to the twenty-eighteen school year to the twenty-twenty-one, twenty-two school year. I think a lot of people's going to be shocked at the increase that, and we totally funded last year, uh, the fourteen million eight oh one three seventy-seven. And we finally actually given fourteen million nine seventy-nine three eighty-nine. I got a lot of things, I just want to get clarification on Sonia. But I know that everybody else wants a chance to talk. So I'm going to cut mine off right here right now and hold off to later on.
Okay, all right, we'll keep moving on. We'll come back around to, do you, do any other board members here have anything right now?
Commissioner Baller's asked, what I was going to ask, who asked about the grant money. But, uh, earlier in this little brother, I heard her say, uh, why we got such a large drop in enrollment in our county? He said over a thousand students, is that correct?
That's the range from ten, two thousand and ten to two thousand and eleven. That's, that's the change. And then with our ninth month B M R, which we just received, we're increasing twenty-five this year. But we were projected and asserted that they done that our A D M would be dropping and eventually pick back up. Um, I'm sure you might want to respond to that. We, right now, we have right at a hundred and fifty-something students at charter schools. You completely didn't have charter schools, I mean, homeschool. I think you can respond to that better than I can.
I was kind of big there. Uh, the, the year range, I think that she was speaking on, she just said twenty-ten to twenty-eleven.
You mean since then?
The twenty-ten, twenty, twenty-eleven school year until now. So in the last, you know, twelve years, we've lost a thousand students.
Okay.
Now, we, we didn't lose a thousand last week. Congratulations was nice, but not that nice.
Twenty-five over last year, we're down twelve hundred.
Okay.
Down twelve.
I, I will also, I will say that there's been a lot of research articles that's come out recently that rural North Carolina is losing A D Ms statewide. People are moving closer to population centers. Um, you know, again, while we look out these windows and see mountains and beautiful lands, scenery and landscapes and all of that, what you don't see a lot of is places to work and restaurants for young families. Uh, the other thing you also don't see is a lot of affordable housing for young families. The, and I'm going to say this, and you can tell I haven't bought a house in a while, the hundred and fifty thousand dollar three-twos, um, three-bedroom, two-bath on a quarter of an acre. Those types of subdivisions aren't plentiful in Stokes County. And so those are your starter houses that bring in school-age kids. And so, and millennials, I'm not bashing them. I've talked about before that, uh, end up at John Brown's most Thursday nights for meatloaf. Um, most families aren't cooking twenty-one meals a week anymore. And so families are looking for places that's close to work with gas prices at five dollars a gallon. Uh, they're looking for places where they can eat, they can, they're looking for entertainment. They're looking for those places that's not plentiful in most of our county. And so, you know, when I first came here, I was told, told it's a, primarily a bedroom community for Winston-Salem. Well, and the, the, the population used to be, you know, seven, what did you have? Seven thousand, eight thousand students back in, in the twelve years ago. We're about fifty-three hundred now. So that decline has been going on for a while now and it's been gradual. They, the sport of education did a population study in the early two thousands that predicted this. We just did a population study in December that showed that it's going to decline for a few more years and then level out and probably level out to twenty-fifty. Uh, so that we would be around five thousand students in twenty-fifty. So while it's, so another maybe three hundred students over the next twenty-five years. So while they're expecting a slight decline, but there's things you can't predict. You can't predict, I mean, again, twenty-five years ago, homeschool charter schools weren't what they are today. But also, you know, if something is built here in Stokes County, if there's an economic boom here that brings in businesses, you bring in an Amazon center and start employing five hundred people, that, that would change the trajectory of things. But as they are sitting right now, it's looking to level out with slight decreases over the next twenty-five years, like what we've experienced for the last twelve, fifteen years.
In ten eleven, we had six thousand nine hundred and fifty-two students. And then currently now, we have five thousand four seventy-two, so in that range. Some years we may be lost, one year we lost thirty-nine, one year we lost a hundred and forty-three, one year fifty-seven, fifty-six, so it's just a, a variety of different years.
And that's where it's tough with the state funding, where when you have nineteen schools and you lose a hundred and fifty students, well, that's less than ten per school, but the state would look at that and say, you lose six teachers. Well, it didn't come in a classroom of twenty-five kids from Walnut Cove that left so that you know where to take a teacher from. But we're cut six positions, but yet no school, and when you say ten kids per, ten kids per school, when you've got a school that has six grade levels, you might lose one or two in each classroom, but then where do you take a teacher from? And that's what makes it so difficult with the state funding.
I think COVID has made a difference too because a lot of people chose, uh, private schools um, because they weren't sure if they would be in person or not. So they would just go ahead and put their kid in a private school or homeschool situation and...
Masking in person made a huge difference. I mean, we had people contact us and say, my kid is kindergarten eligible this year, but I'm thinking about keeping them out of this year to wait till next year. Now, we have had an increase this year of what we think is going to start this next school year based on our kindergarten registration. So hopefully those people are coming back. But there were lots of reasons in the last couple of years, either fear of the pandemic, didn't like masking, didn't like virtual learning, that we did lose people to that for homeschool, private school that didn't have to follow the rules that we had to follow.
You can continue on that if you want to.
I will summarize when they got across, we'll cap it out like that, it's okay.
Let me, let me start with the process first because I think that's come under a little scrutiny. Capital. Okay, you go ahead. I, I will always defer what talking about money to you.
Board of Education reports was the twenty-six million five thirty-four eight seventy-five. County manager's recommendation was three million six six and five. And that is a decrease of twenty-two eight six nine eight seventy-five. Now, when the board of education met, Dr. Rice submitted his superintendent's budget, we actually started out with just the capital needs and he's going to explain how we came up with this figure. It was two million seven hundred and sixty-three thousand dollars. And then again, let's just look back at the county manager's recommendation. With that figure is three million six sixty-five. So there's actually an increase of nine hundred and two thousand dollars. So the twenty-six million was a total, but Dr. Rice made you read it in the back if you were.
All right. So what our process is each year, um, as you know, we have nineteen facilities. While the early college technically is maintained by the county commissioners, their principal submits a request as well. There are times that we let y'all know and y'all take care of that. There are some things that it's not going to get taken care of, but we look to see if we can meet that as well. But we go to each principal and we say, what are three items that you need fixed in your school? And so each principal gets that list of three items. Then we go to our maintenance department and Ricky and Richie are here and they can certainly help explain any of this as, as needed. And they look behind the scenes at the bones of something because a principal's not going to know that, again, forgive me if I say this wrong, the burner on a boiler is about to go out. But that burner is going to make, there's no heat in a school if that happens. So they come behind and then they make their request as well. And so when we did our initial request, it came up to, what Ricky, about seven million dollars from the principals, which is pretty typical of what happens every year. Then Ricky and Richie, myself, the assistant superintendent, Ms. Moore, we sit there and we say, okay, out of this seven million dollars in requests, five to seven million on any given year, we, I used to talk to then-county manager Morris and now-county manager Schaefer and say, what can we, can we kind of expect with the tax money that's coming in? Whether it's one point five million, one point seven million, two point one million. They kind of gave us an estimate around February, March, before we started this. So we tried to match a budget close to what the tax dollars would come in to be a responsible budget. We've done that since I've been here and I believe that was the process before as well. So when we did that as normal, we, we came up with one that was through, if you look at the list, it's through item twenty-two, which was two point seven million sixty-three thousand dollars. So the first twenty-two items on our list were what was... So the first twenty-two items on our list were what was my recommendation to the, to the county commissioners, I'm sorry, to the Board of Education. One thing that was added on to that this year was, in sitting in the meetings with Ricky and Richie, and not to throw Richie under the bus, I'll give him, I'll say I'm going to give him credit instead of blame him, I'm going to give him credit. He said, Dr. Rice, I'm worried. And working on the HVAC, we have old units in most of our facilities that could go out at any time. The mechanical side of it is where it has a twenty-year lifespan, it's already run twenty-eight, twenty-nine, thirty years. And so it could go out at any time. And I said, well, how much are you talking? And probably a million and a half per our small schools, probably two million in our big schools, depending on what breaks at each one. But I'm very worried that at any time, we could have multiple failures go down at multiple schools. And if I don't go on the record and say this, I don't think I'm doing my job. And I agree with him, because we all know, I mean, we're in a soft society, and it's a hundred degrees today, and we have summer schools going on. If we get it without air conditioning in a building that wasn't ma- now, back when the buil- schools were built in the twenties, they were made with windows all the way around, ten-foot ceilings, cross ventilation to try to help with that stuff. But nowadays, they're not made that way. And so you put, take a air conditioner out at Southeastern Middle School, at Pine Grove, you're going to sit and bake in the sun. And so he said, I don't want anybody to, if these catastrophic failures, when they start happening, not if, but when they start happening, I don't want anybody to look at me and say, why did you never say this? So I want to be on the record to say this. I said, okay, let's go on the record and say this. So I presented that to the Board of Education with our normal budget, which normally maxes tax dollars, what the other requests were, because then the Board of Education could say, well, we disagree with you, we don't like these three items, we can pull these over for the same amount of money and get in that. So I always give them the other requests from the principals. And then we had the other things with the HVAC. Well, when the Pine Hall discussion started coming up, and we started talking about overall needs with nineteen old facility, nineteen facilities with many of them being built in the fifties and sixties, and when you get two million dollars a year, which I know is a lot more than used to be given, but when you talk about trying to maintain nineteen facilities with two million dollars with buildings that are built in the fifties, eventually you're not going to be able to catch up. And so people at Pine Hall are like, but you're, you're getting everything you asked for, ask for more. And that's not the reason we did this, we wanted to show what the need is. We're grateful that y'all included us in the facility studies now, because now that can get us all as a county, and all of us with the same group that did all the county buildings and us, to help us plan for the future with how much life may be left in a building, before it becomes the wrong thing to do to keep patching an old, old building. Because when HVAC goes out, and pipes go out, and electrical goes out, and the foundation starts busting, you know, eventually it's going to be more cost-effective to replace that than it is to patch that. Uh, I used to live in a house that was built in nineteen twenty-seven, I couldn't keep up. Uh, I, I, I learned that, that I needed to buy a newer, more energy-efficient house because I was spending all my money on repairs constantly. Well, the same thing would happen with the schools, so we're very grateful now to be included in that, and it's y'all allocated funding for that, that will help us plan in the future. But the reason the number was so different this year was we said, you know, we don't expect twenty-six million dollars, twenty-seven million dollars, but we just want to say, these are the needs that have been requested. Um, if you wanted to draw a line somewhere, at line twenty-two is really what we expected somewhere in that ballpark of over two million dollars. Now, there, again, with Pine Hall's ADM, the, that roof is a question, do we patch it this year and see what the ADM looks like next year, kindergarten registration? To help us be financially responsible with our money. And so that's what, that's the process that we went through this year, and that's why it's a different number than it was in the past, because we didn't want y'all blindsided, we didn't want our board blindsided of what some, and, and again, when, if you look at that, nineteen million of it's HVAC stuff. And so we just want to be on the record, this could be catastrophic in the future, and so we wanted to be on the record with that. So it's not, we don't, we're not, if y'all said, here's nineteen million dollars, I don't think it's physically financially responsible for us to go replace it all right now. But it is going to break at some point, and hope it's not tomorrow, uh, but it's sometime in the next several years, it's going to start breaking down. It's past its life story.
Other issues besides what's...
And that's the other thing, that the, the long-range study will show that is not on here, is, I mean, you could do window replacements at Sandy Ridge, Germanton, Pinnacle, uh, Lawsonville, parking lot replacements, the parents at Germanton complain them every year about the potholes going in that place, that's another billion dollars. Well, South Stokes parking lot's alligatored, that's going to be a couple of million dollars. We're not far from our new school, West Stokes, needing a new roof. That's going to be a four million dollar venture in a couple of years. That's why we're excited about the facility studies, to help get us all on the same page, rather than us running estimates and trying to project, to use the reputable company that y'all use to get us all on the same page as the county. But when I first was hired, and again, this was twenty sixteen data, uh, I asked to ride around with David Birch at the time, and Ricky, and we went and visited every facility, and we talked about what needs to be replaced to get us up to date. And just riding around for two days with them, I kept a little list, and when we got done, I said, so basically sixty million dollars? And they said, we got a lot of old facilities, that we either need to be replaced, consolidated, something, but yeah, to run nineteen schools and, and to fix them all up to today's standards, if you will, to provide nice places of education, probably around sixty million, and again, that was six years ago pricing. It's not all in here, but will show up in the, the study, we believe. Uh, but that's how we got to the numbers, and hopefully that explains some of that, why it's so different this year than before. It's, it wasn't, and, and we came the other week, and I apologized to Shannon, didn't mean to drop that on her, it's her first year as a county manager, to say, hey, here's this huge request. Um, again, our board didn't expect, I, I don't want to speak for the board, but I, I don't think they ever expected a check to be handed for that kind of money. We just want y'all to make sure that y'all are aware of many of the needs that's in our, especially that nineteen million in HVAC needs.
Go ahead.
So I hope you can understand spitting the milk out when I open the envelope there.
Sure.
Okay. Yeah, so, um, I appreciate you explaining that to us and what's going on, but, uh, you can imagine a sticker shock, or the deer inhalants, or whatnot, when we first seen this, and of course, I made a comment, it was kind of laughable, being sarcastic, and I think it's kind of got taken the wrong way there.
And, and let me say, I agree with you.
Yeah.
I, I a hundred percent agree with you, and I was not offended, I went, I heard some people, you know, stuff it, and so I went back and watched it. I was not offended at all about what she said.
Yeah. I don't think it's funny that we've got these kind of issues in school, it's not a laughable issue, but when you've been doing, this is the fourth budget we're going down, another three, you're kind of looking, million, million and a half, two billion, I'm twenty-six billion. What? So yeah, it was kind of like, like I said, spitting the milk out when you open the envelope there, but I do appreciate you explaining that to us and what's going on with it, and feel sorry for you guys. Yeah, you two back there. But thank you.
You're welcome.
I'll add this, and I mean, Ms. Coxton and Mr. Mendenhall, we wrote budgets, working with Rick, and the twenty-five million, just opening up the, the curtain to show you what's behind the requests, like, this is, it's going to happen. If you get another two or three years out of something that was designed to fail ten years ago, hey, we're going, but if we, if you don't know what's out there, we can't, you know, we can plan to fail if we don't.
It's like Dr. Rice said too, this is almost, uh, just the tip of the iceberg. You know, when you start looking at plumbing and electrical and parking lots and roofs and windows and painting, you know, how long has it been since a lot of our, our schools have just been painted? You know, I would invite everybody to go and just do a facility tour, and go through and see some of the inside of the schools, and how long has it been since they've just been painted? A lot of them still have lead paint, you have issues with that, so it's not, I think the one good thing about the capital budget that we, that we submitted, is that it has drawn a lot of attention to the condition of our schools. And I think that might be part of what our board was trying to accomplish, is, you know, if we just keep setting up a, a, a capital budget of what we know the money's there, then it just kind of keeps, you know, the same old, same old. But I think this has kind of opened a lot of people's eyes, and say, well, wait a minute, you know, what's going on? But it is only the tip of the iceberg, we could have easily submitted a capital request of a hundred million. With no problem.
Well, Ms. Masick talks about her time of work, she used to teach at King Elementary School, and the same bathroom fixtures and counters and stuff that's rotten, was there when she taught there, and what year?
Nineteen seventy-two.
To put that in perspective, I was born in nineteen seventy-two. Uh, and so, uh, you know, to have the same kitchen, same bathroom cabinet vanity.
And same mirror.
Same mirror, same everything.
That's how you know that.
Again, when, when you talk about, why are we losing students? And we're trying to compete for students with curb appeal, and it makes it tough when you've got bathrooms that smell fifty years old, seventy years old, and our customers do a great job of trying to, but when you get down and inspect it, it's fifty and seventy year old fixtures and bathrooms and odors and all of that.
Dr. Jones is our principal now at West Stokes, was the principal at Popper Springs for a while before he went to West Stokes. And he said, when a parent would take, uh, do a, a school's tour, and they would go tour King Elementary, and then they would come over and tour Popper Springs, he said that was an easy win every time. Once they walked through King Elementary, and then they walked through Popper Springs, there's no choice about where they wanted to go, they wanted to go to Popper Springs. So if we're, if we're, if we're trying to compete with a, a, a charter school or another school just across the county line, and they have a choice, um, it does, it does make a difference. And it's not only King Elementary, it's Pinnacle, it's Pine Hall, Sandy Ridge, uh, you know, we have, we have, King Elementary, my mom and dad are eighty-six years old, and when, when they were a senior in high school, at King High School, the classroom that they were in their senior year is the same classroom that my daughter Lizzie was in when she was in the third grade. My daughter's eighteen now, so that's been, you know, ten, eleven years ago. So the kids that were in the third grade class at King Elementary this year were in the same class as my parents were when they were seniors at King High School when they were eighty-six. That tells you, that kind of puts it in perspective of how long that classroom's been there, and it's probably been very little changes to it, maybe painted over the years, but, uh, I don't know if the windows have been updated or much else has been changed about it, but, uh, but it is an issue that we're going to have to deal with, I think, across the board, not only just one or two schools, we have several schools, and we are appreciative of the facility study, that it'll come along and hopefully give us some clues and some ideas and some answers, as to which direction maybe we need to go in.
I don't have a way to tell me last night she graduated in nineteen fifty, in Sandy Ridge.
I'm going to grab on a lemon, I'm going to grab on a lemon, say between twenty and twenty, uh, ten to twenty percent of the population of Stokes County, because we're an older, seasoned, no, community, I'm going to say ten to twenty percent of our citizens graduated high school from what is one of six of our remaining elementary schools.
So I'm going to chime in here for a second, if that's okay, and, um, say, first of all, I totally get where you're going with that, with, with showing us that, however, myself and, and Mr. Mendenhall know it all too well, uh, without the, um, shock and all, we, we know, we get it, we, we've been there, we were, we were there when we were getting, um, in two thousand and six and seven, a hundred and fifty thousand dollars, uh, for capital, and two thousand and eleven and twelve, when we got two hundred and twenty thousand in capital. And people want to know why the schools are in the shape they're in. Part of it's because they're old, they're just old, but part of it is because there were a lot of years in there, two thousand sixteen, seventeen, where we got six hundred and fifty-one thousand in capital. So it wasn't that we weren't asking, and like you said, um, Mr. Mendenhall brought forty million some in a, in a separate, um, not a request, but, but to the commissioners back in two thousand and sixteen, I think it was, to show, you know, what the additional needs were. So, you know, we, we know, I think we have a pretty good understanding and idea, so the, the thing is, how are we going to fix it? Are we going to keep kicking the can down the road, or, you know, what are we going to do? I think one thing we could do is set up a contingency fund for HVAC, go ahead and dedicate some money to it, and have it there for emergencies, because like you said, it doesn't make a lot of sense to fix them all before they tear up. Uh, but be prepared to start replacing some stuff, uh, as we can, and to have an emergency fund for when those things just do go out, and we have to do it all of a sudden, uh, that would be one of my suggestions. And, and also, once we get this facility study, and, and y'all have a chance to digest it, is to come back with, you know, some recommendations of where do you see the schools in five years and ten years? Do you see consolidating some schools, um, building some new schools? I'm not opposed to whatever y'all want to do, um, I'm just putting that on the record. I, I support, and know you're in a tough situation, and people hate change, but people hated it back when they closed King High School and built South Stokes and put King and Walnut Cove together, they didn't like that either. And, um, it was tough, and this is tough again, we're just in a tough spot where a lot of these schools are either going to have to be replaced, or consolidated, or, you know, we're going to have to see, because we know there's not enough money to build all new schools, but I'm not opposed to a bond referendum, if that's what y'all want in request of us, is to put it out there, because that's the, the only way to, to make a pugilism, and it would be to do some type of bond referendum, and look, and it would look at a tax increase, but that would be decided by the people. And are they willing to step up and, and value community schools enough to want to do a bond to save some of them, or, or what is academically best for those kids? And even if we could replace every school, is that the best thing academically? Maybe not, you know? So that's why we look to you guys to tell us, and I mean, I, I may know more than Andy about schools, or, or Wayne here, just because of my fifteen years of sitting where y'all are, but, but still, a lot's changed even in just the last few years since I came off the school board, so that's why I would defer to you guys to tell us, how do we fix this? And, and we don't want to keep ki- I don't think we want to keep kicking the can down the road, we want to, even, even if we have to make some tough decisions, we make them.
Well, I agree with you that it is going to be tough decisions, and it's going to be things that are unpopular, because everyone loves their neighborhood schools, and I get it, I, I'm in our schools, and the community support that our small, local schools have is tremendous. The, the, the spirit that's there, and, and the community support is amazing, and, and I love that, and that's one of the things that's great about our school district. But I also look at what our kids are missing out on. And when I see that when we're inefficient and spread out, our kids don't have the same opportunities that more efficient models of schooling have. Looking at, you know, the electives that are offered at Mooresville Grade D, or Davie County High School, where it's one high school in a county, is they are, are able to offer their kids tremendous amount of things versus what we're able to offer them. But you lose the community spirit, feel for that, for an academic advantage. But at the same time, I don't know that anybody would say that the wise thing to do would be to rebuild the old schools where they are, to keep nineteen schools where they are today. I just don't think that would be financially responsible, I don't think that that's an academic best plan for our students. But after we get the facility studies this year, I'm, I'm encouraging our board to sit down, look at it, develop the plan, and maybe have a Saturday meeting with the Board of Commissioners to present a plan, talk about it, and talk about what funding may be available. The thing that's scary about it is, is I know it takes, the, we all work for the people. Um, and where I talked to the former superintendent in Davie County, just to build their high school, they've had to pass a school, they've had to pass a 10-cent tax to pay the mortgage for the next 20 years. What if the county says no? And I know at that point, it's not us kicking the can down the road, but our children are going to suffer. If nothing is done and everything's voted against, because we want to hang on to what we have, but we don't have the money to make, and nobody will want to pay to maintain what we have. So it's the catch-22 of, we know we can't afford to redo what we have where it is, but we're not going to pay for anything different either. And that's where it's frustrating in these positions.
Yep. If this is okay, can we take a five-minute recess? And then just pick it back up? Sorry.
This year went up a pretty good percentage. We didn't go up last year, we did this year. So all those things, retirement increases, just things that you just can't cut out, you know, and I know your challenge with that too. And looking at, when we looked at the tax rate, you know, of course, your current expense comes from the ad valorem tax, and then also the other funding sources like state motor vehicle penalties and interest and everything on that breakdown sheet. Just on the ad valorem is the 12,947,608, but the total recommended appropriation is Of course, that's my recommendation, and our board can discuss that further after this meeting or during this meeting. If they, you know, decide to, if you are going to fund more of that request, or if you're able to fund any of that from your fund balance, I don't know, to finish out some of that, but I know that's not a recurring, and it sounds like from what Ms. Moore described, you've only gotten that fund balance by moving some of those funds around from your custodial expenses, so those are going to come right back in your budget next year. So I understand that is hard too, but our board, you know, has to look at that and see. I was, you know, pretty much addressed by our board, and our goal's meeting to keep our fund balance at a certain rate. I pulled it down a little lower than that this time, just because we had to, because of the costs that we had incurred from that last year to this year. And then on your capital side, of course, that request with the 26 million, I understand, and I understood a lot more after meeting with Dr. Rice and with Mr. Robertson about why you did that request the way you did, and I get that's just a drop in the bucket of what you need, and I wish that we could just say, let's fund the whole thing and get it, get everything done. But I hope that the 3,665,000, which is just my recommendation, it can certainly be changed by our board, I feel like that includes all of your Article 40, all of your Article 42 sales tax, and that complete 1,250 in the fund balance that was here for the schools. And like I said in the budget message in our meeting, my opinion of that is, is that's the school's fund, it's a fund balance, it should go towards your capital needs to help try to address some of those issues that you have. Of course, there'll be some, we left 40,000 in there after the 1.2, just for some reserve. Then, of course, there'll be more flowing into that in this, you know, when the sales tax comes in, it's held back three months, I think, is that right, Lisa? April, May, and June as being reported, but we'll get those funds later, so you'll still have some more fund balance building in there throughout this fiscal year. But just, you know, I just think that's your funding, and you know best how you need to spend it, as far as what you need to repair and what needs to happen. So I hope that that, that recommendation, while it's not 26 million, it is quite a bit of an increase from last year's, and I did watch your meeting from when you discussed the 2.7, and that was sort of my thinking of that, if we could get somewhere close to that or over that to at least fund what I knew that you had to have this year before a bigger conversation could happen between our boards and try to decide how you move forward. And I know there's a lot of big decisions you've got to make as far as what you do, like Sonia said, in five years, 10 years, moving down the road. But so, that being said, I think the HVAC contingency is a really good idea to look at. You know, we could probably start looking at some of some of these sales tax funds that are going to be coming in these coming months to start building a fund there possibly. And even the bond referendum, like you mentioned, and I know you all want to discuss that further as far as options and what, you know, what might happen there. But, you know, other than that, that's where I left the budget this time, and that was the recommendation that I made, and I'm certainly glad to answer any questions, or, you know, I'm open to options and ideas of trying to look more creatively, try to figure something out. You know, I love our schools and love our local schools. I've got two daughters that went through every grade here at Germanton to Southeastern to South Stokes, and we love our wonderful schools here. Don't want to see something happen to any of them, but I know that eventually with what she said about your population study, with looking like we're going to level out to 2050 with about 5,000 students, I know the feasibility of all that staying the same is probably not going to happen, and we're going to have to look at, you guys have some tough choices to make for future. So, but, that's, that's where it's at, and, you know, I'm hoping that we can, can figure out some things to help, help with the schools moving forward. If they have any questions or concerns or suggestions.
Your board has anything they'd like to put in to the conversation?
Yeah, I'll start it off, and I'll let each board member have a say. Well, first of all, I just want to thank y'all for meeting with us today, and I want to thank Ms. Moore too. If y'all hear Ms. Moore talk, I mean, there's, what would we do without her? Right? I mean, it's amazing that, the numbers that she has, and she does a great job. But on our current expense budget, the 1.4 million, I think, is the big thing. And from talking to our board, I don't think we're going to be in favor of using our fund balance to balance our budget this year, because a lot of that will be reoccurring expenses, and, and we don't want to have to cut positions. But I think if we're not funded, I think that's probably where it's headed, is we're going to have to cut positions. And I don't see much way around it. That, in the times that we're in now, there's so much uncertainty. Diesel fuel, I noticed today, was 5.69. You know, maybe Andy can tell me where it's going to top out.
It's like 10 dollars.
Yeah.
Where you saw 5.69, it was 5.5.
Yeah, so, so, you know, when we're looking at that, we're looking at our fund balances, that's our cushion. You know, we're, you know, if diesel goes to $8, $9 a gallon, which it could, what are we going to do? If we spend all our fund balance on trying just to balance our budget, then we're not in a good position. And I know from watching one of your, your former, your previous budget sessions, Ms. Shaver said, well, if you empty our capital fund balance and give us all our money, maybe, you know, it'd make good sense for us to keep a fund, a capital fund balance at our side, right? Maybe not spend the whole, you know, the whole bit. So I think if it's responsible enough to do it on the, on the capital side, it would be responsible enough to do it on the current expense side. If we spend out of 1.4 million of our current expense fund balance, then I don't know that that's being responsible on our side. So, and you know, we talked about it at our meeting, we had a meeting at the end of last week. If we have to cut out 28 positions, we're looking at cutting out teachers, we're looking at cutting out assistant principals, teacher coaches, probably about custodians. You know, those, it's not just one, one position, it's going to be from top to bottom. If we don't have an assistant principal, then that falls all back on to the principal's position. And there's a lot of responsibility that would fall to the, to the principal that now the assistant principal really helps out with. So, so we would ask it, that we do what we could, maybe find that extra 1.4. I think the new additions that we have to the budget, the nine items that are 600, over 600,000, you know, we could probably, you know, we could probably trim that, trim those back pretty easily. And if we wanted to pick up a couple hundred thousand out of that from the fund balance, then that's maybe not so bad. But to pull 1.4 out of it is probably not doable. At least, that's, I think, probably the consensus that we've discussed already. So, but I do, I do want to thank y'all for being with us and the consideration to our budget. And I know that the increase that we're experiencing now is really, just like you said a while ago, it's beyond our control. You know, it's the inflation, it's the gas prices, it's the unfunded mandates that come down from the state. Those are just things that we really have very little control over, and there's not much else we can really do about it. Hopefully it gets better, but at this point, we just don't know. So, thank y'all. Want to pass it on down to, well, Mr. Bryant, let him make his way.
Just want to thank y'all again, like Vaughn said, for meeting with us and getting this discussion started, because I'm sure we're going to have several more of these. Appreciate all you do for us. But, you know, getting back to some of the stuff in that budget there, like the HBAC stuff, those numbers on that budget, well, when you take the Judd and the Fred on, it costs 100 bucks, it's now 1,300 bucks, in a couple of years, you can imagine how everything has doubled, tripled, and stuff. And then look at our gas, we talked about these, but we've got all these gas vehicles out here too. There's just no way that I see that we could wipe out that 1.4 million dollars, because if we do, that would not be physically responsible to us. So, we really need that funded, just like Vaughn said. So we don't want to make any mistakes.
Well, first of all, I'd like to thank you for the opportunity to meet and follow me today, to discuss the concerns, Marsha, that's going to school. Now, my thoughts today would be twofold, or really it's threefold. First of all, to help ensure that we can maintain our current level of operating expenses, and that's been, you know, a lot of that's been noted. And secondly, I'd like to still try to provide the 5% supplement to our staff and teachers that we've talked about. Thirdly, we sure want to keep our resource officers. We definitely want to keep them. And as you well are aware, with your budget, benefits, salary, retirement, insurance, utilities, technology, fuel, our expenses that keep rising with little control on our We appreciate being included in the facility study. Once the results are concluded, then I feel we'll be able to meet together and look at what can be done to implement some of our capital needs. And so I hope today, you know, I'm glad today we've been able to have the amicable discussions about our schools, because I know everyone loves our schools, and we want to all do the very best we can for all the citizens of Stokes County.
I'll just say that we all love Stokes County, or we wouldn't be here, and I appreciate y'all's time and recompensation for the extra funding for the HBAC. I think that would definitely be a wise move, and like everyone else has said, you know, number one is our student opportunities and their needs being met, and all the increases in the budget, that's already been mentioned with inflation, due to power materials, things like that, we're really feeling it, just like Ms. Shaver referenced, the county is a similar increase in percentage, so keeping us whole would be very much appreciated. It's also been mentioned the state's given us lots of unfunded mandates, like Ms. Moore mentioned, the staff insurance, and increase in pay and things which are very much deserving and needed, but again, they're unfunded, so that does hurt our current expense. And I just encourage you guys to keep our number one employer and marketer, which is our schools here, in great shape. Our county, this is our schools and our schools to turn over people who want to reside, that's already been mentioned, where they want to raise their families, and without that, the school's community is doing the middle. So again, I think that's kind of a, you know, that affects all of us. It's not just a school's thing, it's a county issue as far as, you know, the need to keep the good schools and keep them going. And without them, unfortunately, young families do sometimes move away or look for other opportunities. But I do understand that every need or want may be met, but we as a school system need to be able to maintain our costs that have been mentioned with our operations from last year, plus, plus the increased needs due to inflation, and hopefully not touch the fund balance because of unforeseen issues and just being physically irresponsible. And also, you know, there are new requests too, because we're always looking for ways to offer more to help our students and give opportunities in our schools. Thank you.
I'm scared, I think. I mean, they have this, a lot of eloquent words, and I've got four written down, so I guess mine may not be quite as long, but it'll be passionate either way. This is my eighth one. I've done six with about Sonia, Rick's been involved with eight, Mr. Minnall's been involved with eight. The feeling between the two boards, it's a total difference from 2010 when we sat here. I mean, before, we came up gloom and doom, we feel optimistic, y'all have been very generous, and I want to thank you for that, as far as working with us. We know y'all have limited resources. Hey, we're all Stokes County citizens. Every dollar we spend, forty dollars goes to the schools and to other services. And I know Ms. Cox and Mr. Minnall said, when we had no fund balance, and we had to come back to the commissioners, because our total capital outlay was less than the roof at South Stokes, and we lost $80,000 in mold remediation because we didn't fix the roof. That's 80,000 we'll never get back, and I want to thank y'all for at least having the fourth thought, to be able to allow us to plan a little heavier. That is a direct representation of why I feel this board needs to have a fund balance for those emergency situations that we had to react instead of having to call two special meetings, get everybody in town, advertise the 72 hours, and delay the opening of a high school, because we had mold all over one of the buildings, so, I mean.
I think I blocked that out.
Yeah.
You're going to give me PTSD.
Well, no, I pulled the top of the roof just to see how bad it was, and I thought I was going to fall through, and I'm like, hey, this isn't right. Yes, you were on the roof then, but I was on the roof then. You didn't go up the ladder, trust me, it was not pretty. Ricky and I, like Ricky, if I could just hack it off. The supplement, I think we all came together last year, and we agreed 4.5 with the assumption or the intention of going to a full five from the commissioners. That was the verbiage, we can go back and look at the tapes, I mean, that's the takeaway I've got. So we want to edit in our board out of the fund balance we had, made it whole. So we would like to, of course, honor the commitment we made to our employees. It's just simple, they can go across the county line and make an additional 5%, starting at Forsyth.
Seven.
Seven.
Five.
Five, seven, yeah. They're going to make more money, but they choose to be a Stokes County family instead of a Forsyth County teacher. I won't put it that way. No offense, Dwayne, I know you work for Forsyth County Schools. And then, and then as Ms. Moore stated, we've had a hit financially on our resource officers. I would hate to think we tried to save money and have some of the issues that unfortunately some people are having to deal with. To me, it's just not worth taking a risk. I mean, we're talking about lives here. We're talking about safety. We've done great, I feel like we've done great things with the money y'all have given us, we can account for it. Every dollar we spend, yeah, I treat like it's one of mine, and I'm very tight. Not as tight as my wife, but it's just how that. But I want to thank you for allowing us to come together, work through the problem. We can all stand around and put our heads in the sand, and that's what we would have done had we not given you a view of the train that's coming down the track. The 25 million dollars is that train, and we're standing on the track. We've got time to get off of it now, but that was the whole intention for that. We can, we can ignore it, plan it goes away, wait for another election year, somebody else to get the problem done, or we can do what we were elected to do and actually start planning for the future. We know, we have a very good idea of what the population's going to be, we need to react accordingly, we don't need to just be reactive, we need to be proactive, because it's going to cost us more in the future, just like it did at the roof. So with that, I'm going to turn it over.
All right, thank you. I'll let my each board member can put their comments in, we'll start with Mr. Nicholson and around.
So the biggest thing I want to touch on is, I do agree with you two about the school resource officers. I think that was one thing that this board, I'll take it as one person in this board who would not disagree with y'all on that. It's a tragedy to see what's happening in our country, to even think of something like it happening in Stokes County is awful, but happening anywhere is awful. But I personally don't have any, my kids in Stokes County schools, but still every kid that walks in this county, I kind of look at the responsibility for as well, and I'd hate to see anything like that happen. So I do share the same passion with keeping our schools safe, as you two have mentioned, and I'm sure the rest of y'all's board feels the same about that. I don't see why there'd be any difference on it. And the good thing is, from hearing from y'all's comments, I think y'all see as well what a predicament, just like y'all are. We've got limited resources come through, and I think I was sharing with Commissioner, oh, excuse me, School Board Member Robinson and Bryant. That's what this sales tax that we put on the ballot two years ago would have been a major help, would it fix everything we got now? Absolutely not. But could it help put a dent on what we've got coming in the future? Yeah, it could have been. And I think at that time, when we was trying to put out there, a lot of citizens misunderstood what it was, only thing there was was tax increase, and I don't think nobody really sees on what we've got facing, and we've actually seen some of these things a few years when I first come onto the board. Of course, we got county issues as well, we've got buildings that need to be have support done to. So finish up this budget, it's not going to be fun. I do understand that you guys want to keep the fund balance for yourselves. It does make less of a headache besides having to come back to the board commissioners asking for more money. But I'll definitely be taking that consideration, and I appreciate you guys taking your time coming to meet with us and going where it is, and especially explaining the capital budget there. But, and I hope the citizens heard every bit of it, and hope they understand what's coming forward, so, thank you guys. Thank you, Madam Chair.
You're welcome. Mr. Minnall, would you like to make some more comments at this time?
Well, sure, Madam Chair. At your command.
Go right ahead, the floor is yours.
Oh, I just want to say a few things, and, and, you know, Doc, Dr. Rice, are you there?
Yes, sir.
Can I call you Doc?
You can call me whatever you want.
Okay, Doc. You know, I've been in your shoes, and I feel for you. I do. I've been there, been asking, asked for money, and Mike has been with me before, Sonia's been with me. And I just want to say, first of all, to you, Vaughn, Lynette, Cheryl, Dwayne, Mike, and Pat, all, how much I appreciate the way y'all have handled this meeting. I want to say thank you to all of y'all. And I could have left somebody out if I did, I apologize, but thank y'all for the way you conducted yourselves, you did an outstanding job, and I guess the reason that I say that is because I've been there, I've been in your shoes, and just to tell you, to be honest with you, this, we used to call it a trip up the hill. Y'all have presented your case very well. I do want to just mention five or six things that y'all had mentioned, and I'll turn it back over to our Madam Chair.
All right.
Dr. Rice brought up community schools, and Mike Rogers also brought up community schools. I think Mike gave an address that probably 10% to 20% of the population. We happen to have seven schools that were high schools that are now elementary schools. Andy Ridge, Pinnacle, Pine Hall, London, Lawsonville, King Elementary, and Nancy Reynolds. And that's seven schools, and I think we have nineteen schools. So, that's a pretty large sum of what I call also community schools. And they do have a very strong passion for their schools. And some of those schools were built quite a while back. So, I just want to throw that in, but I also want to throw in, Dr. Rice and I probably have run in the same circles, Darren Hartness was one of my closest superintendent. Darren Hartness was the superintendent of Davie County Schools, and I'm sure that's who Dr. Rice was speaking of. Davie County has one high school for all its students. They got about 2,000, a little more than 2,000 students, or close to it. And when Darren went there, that school was many, many years old. So, they put out, put out a bond referendum, and Darren called me several times during that episode, and he really got the community behind him. It was a close vote, it was 51% voted for a new high school, and 49% voted to keep the high school they had. Well, it passed, but the cost of the high school was 56 million dollars, and that was about six or seven years ago. So if you, Vaughn, you're very good at business, Andy, Dwayne, I mean, all y'all people, Mike, you can imagine if it was 56 million six or seven years ago, you know, what would the cost be today? I mean, I don't know off the top of my head, but I'm sure it would probably be somewhere between 75 and 100 million. And the resource officers to me is an absolute keep. There's no way in today's society I would ever want to let a resource officer go. I think y'all, I think the resource officers are very, very vital for the safety of our children, and that's what we're all about, is the children in the schools, and the teachers and assistants in the schools, and the resource officer to me, as they use the word hardening of the schools, the resource officers are very important, and I think all, I can't speak for all five commissioners, but I certainly support resource officers in the schools. And, and, you know, bond referendum, or however we want to go about it, however, because I say however we want to go about it, I'm all back on that, because the Board of Education, y'all have the, once that money goes, y'all, y'all have that. And Dr. Rice, you talked about making some tough decisions, and anytime, and y'all went to Pine Hall, and anytime you talk about closing a school, it creates passionate emotions, because I can remember when Dr. Hobbs came here as superintendent, I was the principal at North Stokes High School, and I'll never forget this, and Sonia, I don't think I ever told you and Mike I told them this, but after our first principals' meeting, he and I walked out the side door together, and Dr. Hobbs looked at me, and he said, Ronnie, what's going to be my most difficult item to deal with in my first six months? And I said, the closing of Nancy Reynolds. And he sort of chuckled and laughed, and he said, oh, no, that's the only problem. He came back to me six months later, and he got me out to the side, and he said, Ronnie, you were exactly right. I didn't ever think it would be that way, but it was. And, you know, and we don't have as many different counties, God, I mean, like what they do, just pass 1.7 billion dollar bond referendum, we, you know, but we hope, Mike, I do hope, and, because you've been on there, Pat Masek, Pat, you've been on there, I hope that y'all look at from 20, the fiscal year in current, and as your capital goes down to current, from 2017 to 2022, I hope all of y'all can see that the Board of County Commissioners has made a sustained effort to increase what we give y'all. And so, I just want to say thank you to all five of the Board, Board of Education members, and Dr. Rice, thank you, Lynette, everybody that's there for your presentation, I thought you did an outstanding job, and we will work hard at coming up with the best we can on this, I hope y'all understand that. And sort of like Mr. Nicholson said, unfortunately, you know, inflation hits everybody, it hits the school system, it hits the government center, it hits everybody, but we'll do our very best to do what we can to help the school system. You got, and I'm going to close with this, Madam Chair, you've got a 15-year board of education member on the county commissioners. I've worked 36 years in education in Stokes County, 36 years, so you got to know how much I love it. And Mike is now in his second or third term, I can't remember Mike, you know, he's a little anxious on you, you know. I can't remember Mike, you know, he's a little age on you, you know? You can't quite remember. Are you in your second or third term, Mike?
Second.
Second term. But to Vaughn, as Chairman, I thought you did a great job handling this, and thank you for that also. I appreciate it, Vaughn.
Thank you.
And Doctor Rice, and Sonia, I'm going to let it go at that.
All right.
Just know that we'll work hard at doing the very best we can for the Board of Education, okay?
All right. Thank you, Mr. Menon Hall.
Appreciate that, Mr. Menon Hall. Hope you forget to fill in better, say.
Thank you. Thank you.
Now, Commissioner Barney Castle to make his comment.
Well, it's great to see the school board here today, it really is. And when we first got this capital outlay, and I'll be honest with you, I said, this is the craziest thing I've ever looked at. But I said, but I said it home, and I read through it, I was like, where did the ball get dropped at? Where did we get to this point at $26 million? Somewhere way back down the road. Somebody should have been laying money aside for all this that was coming. I know roofs didn't start overnight, and HVACs didn't start overnight. And I hope that, and I got right most knowledge of mechanical stuff myself, I hope a lot of these HVAC units don't have R22 in them, because if you do, I can tell you now, folks, the county is in a world of trouble. One, I don't even know if you can buy it anymore. But if you do, I, it's like $1,500, $2,000 for a little jug about this tall. And one unit can suck all that up at one time. So, we better hope that they don't start losing AC units whatsoever. But again, I think this is great for the citizens of Stokes County, to be able to look at, to see where our schools is at, and what we need to do. Going back to what Commissioner Nicholson said about the sales tax, I think it would have helped. It's better than a property tax, because the sales tax, everybody pays. Not just folks at rent, and I'm not kicking people's rent, a lot of people walk away, but the sales tax, everybody pays, not just a handful of people. But I think as both boards, there's going to be some tough decisions to be made here. And I've got a grandson in the school system here, he goes to Mount Olive. He loves it tremendously. And I support our schools 100%. But again, there's going to be some tough decisions made, as far as like our school resource officers. Under no circumstances would I ever, ever vote as a commissioner to take any type of safety away from our kids in this county. And with closing, I read an article the other day, and I said, you know, we're kind of two-sided as society goes today. Every time we have a school shooting, you go to Facebook, and the first thing you read, everybody pray for our schools. Everybody pray for them. Well, maybe if we hadn't took prayer out of school, had the bibles, we wouldn't be having school shootings. But they never think about that. But again, I appreciate the school board, appreciate what y'all do. Y'all got a tough job, and we got a tough job, but somebody's got to come and meet in the middle. Thank y'all.
Commissioner Barney Castle, you missed it. We've got 19 schools, and we've got 19 R22s. And some of those units take three, four jugs.
Did you say 19, 22 R22s?
Oh, yeah, they're all, they all have it.
And the school is 22 years old. The newest high school.
And people may think I'm joking, but if you don't know anything about Freon, this is the most expensive Freon if you will buy right now, if you can get it.
Yeah, about how they can get it, that's 40 jugs. So, you're looking at $100,000.
That's what I was going to say, that's $100,000 for a pallet full of Freon. That's what that is.
Yeah. And a pallet, Mike eats at one school, he has a bunch of eggs and stuff.
And it's a fact, man, it's worth every penny.
Yeah.
Wait a minute, there's too much laughing going on in there.
They want to bat you.
No. We're talking about AC, how much we need the AC.
Oh, yeah.
Especially on a day like today. Okay, Commissioner Morris.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Thank you, guys, for coming today. It's great seeing you and meeting with you and exchanging information. I want to clarify one thing, the SRO funding request you have in here, that keeps one SRO in every school, right? Correct. Okay. I think that was one of the things we pushed last time, and that needs to stay that way. I would also say, given the current society, if you guys have school security issues come up in between the budget cycle, that we need to be involved in, don't hesitate to come and ask us and talk to us about that. Next thing I have is, on this discussion we've had about looking at various options, and I think I said this in a budget meeting the other day, I would suggest that as you get into that planning process, set a baseline plan of what the current situation is, with all the risk, all the costs, with this number of schools, and let that be the baseline plan to, you know, to reflect reality to folks that are looking at it, and folks that don't look at it every day, but do it in such a way that folks that are not that involved in the details can still follow what we're talking about. And then, whatever options you put together, compare them to that baseline case. And I think when you do that, it'll be pretty easy to put options together with some, like a risk assessment, cost versus the baseline, things like the number of courses they can take versus the baseline, all that kind of thing. And I think it will be, I think it'll be kind of a common sense kind of solution when you start looking at those options versus keeping the current situation. Then you make it easier for us to all come together on a joint plan if we do it that way. That's just a suggestion. I would suggest we go back to doing five-year capital plans, both us, both you guys in the county, too. Our financial advisor recommended we do that, and we can talk about that some other time. And the last thing, last question I have, you don't really have to answer this if you don't want to, but could you help us gauge what the impact would be if we were, say, cut the funding for the new request that you guys have in there? You don't have to.
You mean, just reduce it that much?
Yeah, that, yeah, what, the new request and all the things that are listed in the budget under that, is that, is that like the least painful thing if we had to cut something? Because that kind of keeps you where you're at.
I want to speak for the board, remaining whole is first priority.
And so, you remain whole without the new request?
Correct.
And the new request, of course...
Enhances what we have.
Yeah, and there's reasons for having it in there.
Sure.
Okay. That's all I have, Madam Chair.
Okay. All right. Well, again, I'll reiterate what my other board members have said, that we appreciate the opportunity to meet with y'all and talk about this face to face. And it is a big change, like you said, Mike, from years ago and the PTSD days when we, you know, didn't have quite the relationship. And I think it's wonderful that we do have a good working relationship, both of our boards. And I think the big benefactor of that is the schools and the children, the students and the teachers of our schools benefit greatly from us working with each other and against each other. And I will say, I'll touch on the resource officers, because as a, I'm myself an LEO mom, law enforcement officer mom, that's what we kind of go by. And there's, you know, there's just no price tag you can put on somebody that's willing to put their life and give their life for those kids in those schools. And I know every resource officer would if called to do that. And, you know, I just don't think you can pay them enough to, for that kind of job and that sacrifice that they're willing to make. And you spoke to taking prayer out of school, and I think you can see the downturn, but that's not the biggest thing, because kids still pray in school. My husband, retired school teacher, I can tell you, those kids pray in school. Those kids bring their bibles to school. There's bibles and prayer in school, but not like it was back when we were in school, of course, but...
Athlet.
But the thing that's the biggest difference is the mental health issues that are prevalent today that weren't there. Even with my kids, my oldest one was 36, and so, there's just huge changes from when I was in school myself, even when my kids were in school. And what you're seeing today on the mental health side of things is just crazy ridiculous. And, you know, these parents are not involved in their kids' lives. They don't know what's going on with their kids, half of them. They're given these devices with no oversight, and then they are doing things online and taunting and bullying and things that, at a level we've never seen before. I commend you for the, putting the emotional support and a mental health person in place. I hope that you've seen some positive results with that, the extra counselors and things, because if you really want to make a dent in some of this violence and people and the disconnect that these kids have, I think the mental health is where we're going to have to focus a lot of resources. And I was just in a VIA meeting yesterday, and I think this county's going to see some marked improvements with VIA versus when we were with Cardinal, because these people really do have boots on the ground. They're, they are paving the way with mental health and some of the things, and they really want to help our county. I appreciate John Acheek coming to those meetings, and her input is invaluable. But we just, you know, we do have a partner with VIA. We can do more mental health stuff with the schools, I feel like. We were willing to help y'all work on that as well, because that's going to, that's going to make a difference, because it's also a prevention of the drug abuse and stuff that we're seeing. If they never start, then you don't have to get them off of it. Because getting them off, I mean, we listened to a clinician talk yesterday from VIA about how hard it is with this sentinel and, you know, to get these people off of these, it's different.
What'd you say, Ronnie?
So, safety is a priority, these resource officers. I support the full 5%. I mean, I know Winston just gave fire and police 14%, because they can't keep anybody, you know, they just can't keep anybody employed, you know? So, I know, I don't know what the school system is looking at with their supplement, if there's any increases this year, but they've had to up it the last few years. And 5% is nothing compared to some of these neighboring counties. And like you said, we're your family, we're family here. My daughter quit in Forsyth, came to Stokes, took a pay cut, but it's just, it's different because what you have to deal with is different. And, you know, it is more that family atmosphere. So, that being said, you know, inflation is hitting all of us. That's something that we didn't have to look at so much last year and the previous year. But this year, looking forward, we don't all have a crystal ball, we don't know, but it ain't looking good. I think we can all agree on that, that we haven't seen the worst of it yet. So, in that regard, we have to look at, was, you know, we can't just, you know, fund everything we'd like to fund, because we don't know of the unknown, you know, what to do. I agree that the quarter cent sales tax is something we need to look at again, because that could go a long way to help us help the schools, I think. And I don't know that people really understood what they were voting down. They did just hear tax increase, so I think that's something that we could look at as a board, that could help y'all hopefully by, you know, I don't know if it's, if we could get it done for this coming election or not, but certainly in 2024, we could have it ready to go back on a, some type of referendum. So, I don't really have anything else, if anybody else wants to...
I got one thing really fast. We meet again Thursday at 2:00 for our, another budget meeting, and I've been making notes and listening and thinking, and when Lynette said that about, where you all said it, 1.4 would keep you whole, and I think about the $600,000 that you take out would be those new requests. So, one thing we talked about at one of our last meetings was, and our budget was switching up some of our things, we're trying to use our ARP funds for non-recurring items to, you know, balance out later future debt, things like that. But on some of those items, we're going to bring up some budget things back this time to this meeting, on putting some of those other items back into ARP funding rather than financing. Just wanted to throw that out there to our board, if you'd like for us to do some work and look at what it would be to look back at maybe financing some of those big-ticket items we talked about, that we left, if leave them in the budget, and maybe use some of that funding to put to the school current, to keep them whole for this year, while you work up, Perry's working on the study already for the facilities, we've already got him on that, he's starting that soon, he'll be in touch with you guys soon. He's already reached out, okay, he said he would soon, so he's fast. So, and then to also look at that baseline plan you talked about, but you got to do something to keep everything going as it is until you figure out a plan. So, just wondered if our board would like for us to look at that option and bring something to you on Thursday, looking at maybe using some of that funding to keep them whole this year while other things are looked at.
If it's 100% allowable to do that.
Well, that's what I'm, you know, everything is...
With ARP, you're talking about.
Right, yeah, everything, as long as it can flow through a general fund, is if it's a general governmental service, and we are required by statute to operate the schools, keep them functional. So, we'll verify that before Thursday, but I just wondered if you wanted us to check into that.
It would be an option, it would be worth it.
Just something to kind of move some things around to be able to...
This kind of seems like ours is less restricted than theirs, and maybe it is, but I just want to make sure.
Yeah.
It's not restricted.
Do you think there's any chance that they would do any less restrictions on your COVID funding?
Well, I don't have a COVID worry, I think it's just so many. Yeah. This last round that we've gotten, the CARES Act was a little more restricted, but the ARP funds this time have been, we've sat through a million different Zoom meetings with the school of government, and it's pretty much now, as long as it's a general governmental service, we can replace it in some salary line items, but use it for other functions. And if we get under $10 million, you can use it like revenue replacement. And since we're under that $10 million threshold, it frees up that, the way you can spend that money. And if we could use it to help, you know, to keep you whole and then look at something later, just throw that out there, and then we can be researching that tomorrow and get an answer by Thursday, hopefully, to look at in our budget meeting.
I'll begin.
I just want to add one quick thing, something that Cox mentioned about the partnership that he said by.
VIA.
That, you know, I'm sure Ms. Cheek probably mentioned this, though, in meeting meetings like that, I've mentioned additional mental health training and awareness to pick up on things and know how to deal with situations. And they're already getting a lot of really great training, but, you know, additional training beginning of the school year, that type of thing. Is that something they branch out, not just...
Well, students being out of school for, they forgot how to interact with each other.
Well, I heard a teacher...
Forgot how to play school again.
I heard a teacher call them feral, that they act like feral. And that's a apt description, I think, and I don't know, it's just like you say, they totally, you would not think that that time off would have made that impact, but it's real, because I've heard it from just about every teacher that I've talked to.
One last thing I'd like to add, you mentioned the law enforcement piece, and there's nothing you could, I forgot the exact wording of what you said, but basically, they're worth every penny when they're willing to put their lives on the line. That's one reason I don't want to go back on the supplement either, because anything I've known of any of these school shootings, there's never been, I've not heard of one case of a teacher leaving their classroom. Every time, they've stayed there with those kids and tried their best to protect them, and many of them have given their lives for them unarmed, without a vest, without anything, and doing nothing but protect those kids with their bodies. And I fully believe that our staff would do the same if called upon. And so, I don't want to touch the supplement either. And so, you know, they, they are willing, they give, they give their life to a service right now, to, for a college-educated career, to make less than they could make in a business world. And we have gotten to the place now in the last few years of going from a supplement that was frozen in 2013, 4% frozen in 2013, to being a full 5%, and to go backwards on that now is not a slap in the face, it's absolute disrespect to say to people that have given their lives and would be willing to give their lives for our children, to be so disrespectful. It would be, it would be a horrible move.
With that being said, Ms. Moore, does 1.4 bring the supplement home? Or was that in addition to? Or was that in addition to?
It may take two.
We came out of our phone box to fund the extra 1%.
So it's included here? Okay. All right. Thank you, Dr. Rice. Anybody else?
I just want to clarify, you said something about the, we probably had that last time. You thought we had said, just to clarify, we did say, and I will, I'm gonna keep my word on that. But one thing I want you guys, some of the old ones, on the old, the same, then ramp up.
I'm wearing a gray suit because my hair fell out. I'm wearing a gray. I look like you.
Oh, that's where you gotta go.
But also, Commissioner Menon Hall, Dr. Rice, would y'all mind elaborating on, or back to 2010 when I was on the board, what all has changed? Because I know some people said, you know, what's the difference now? Of course, with new inflation. But I'm trying to put in words. I said, I couldn't tell you everything that's changed, but like SROs have been advocates. We got the safety, these teacher coaches that were needed. And so what are some more things that has come on into our school over the last 10, 12 years that's added these costs to go up? Would y'all mind elaborating on that?
Some of it is basically just inflation, inflationary cost. You're right about that. But then there's other things like the class size law that came in that restricts the, it changed the funding model for how classroom teachers or schools were funded. Used to, they would say, okay, you're funding a classroom teacher for every 19 kids, but we're not gonna put a cap on how many you put in the building. So if you have 190 kids, you're gonna get 10 teachers. Well, if you put those 190 kids in five classrooms, then you can pay for art music and PE teacher. You can pay for other people. Now the funding is matched to the class size with very, very little variance. And so now when they say, well, we're funding you for 19, and you can only put 19 in the room, now they've come up with support, and we fought that back in 2017, 16, 17. And they said, okay, well, we'll give you a little bit more money now, but it's not the same. So they've changed funding models. They've changed the allotments. Used to, you could change, like they would say, well, we're giving you so much money for teacher assistance. A principal could say, well, I'll trade two assistants for another teacher. Or I'll trade a teacher for an assistant. Now there's restriction. You can't look at that and do that anymore. The funding has gotten so restrictive and there's no more flexibility. And again, with inflationary stuff, but also just different things. I've talked with the superintendent in Rockingham County. They got more money for technology in 2006 than they're getting this year. When did you have more technology needs? A lot more now than you had then. But they got more money then than they do now. So just different pots of money, the way they move it, it has just gotten a lot more restrictive. Ms. Moore, you can speak to the history of it a lot better than I can, but that is a lot of it. It's just the, and it's almost like when you say, well, it seems like our money has a lot of restrictions. Yeah, it seems like every time we make headway on something, they change the rules and makes it harder and harder for us. And luckily, our teachers keep rising to the occasion to serve our kids. But it's almost like when you reach target, now they're gonna move it again and move it again and move it again. And it's just getting more and more difficult and restrictive through the process. Ms. Moore?
I think to do your safety requirements that we're living in now, that didn't used to be. So you've got a lot of expenditure, Ms. Moore, safety that has to be insurance, the type of insurance that you decide. Technology, the coverage there and what we've had to go through is so much greater.
I know, I see.
As I say, our technology needs compared now to a few years ago, there's no comparison. It just has to tip up the game, so. That's basically what you said. And it is restrictive. I'll give you a pure example. We received them a lot, but this year for a psychologist on the state, you can't find them, number one, but we can't transfer the money out. So we're going, I mean, we helped employ one, and then they allowed us to do a contract. So we're ready to find somebody for contracts for a year. So we're gonna lose that funding because, number one, the position's not available, and number two, they won't let us move it. So we could use it for something else, but they don't allow it. Another example, they pulled out from PE teachers, used to be in the regular lineup with teachers. They've been pulled out for elementary level, and you can't pay high school for that. So those students cannot move to a regular lineup for teacher. It's just simple stuff like that that makes it so complicated. It's restrictive.
Well, and what was the, I'm gonna really test your memory now. The retirement rate, what did you pay in 2010?
I don't even know what it was. Probably 7%.
Around 7%, now it's 22?
24.19%.
The 20, I mean, it's tripled. And that's one little line item, and it just keeps happening over and over.
And your E R sum is just $7,000 they choose to hit, and we have to match them first. And it leads to pay. It's just, it's just different types of areas.
Unfunded mandates.
And things like the supplement. Where we were at 2% and frozen, and then went up to 3% and froze it for a while. You take, now we're at 5. To make it all, take 3% of what we pay in payroll. It's a big number.
80% of our budget's payroll.
But it's a big number. But it's also a number that we have to maintain, or we don't attract quality teachers. We still don't pay them what their fair market value would be in another county. We pay them in a rewarding job in a community that cares and shows. But it's still trying to get that 3% because eventually they still have to go get grants.
If you look back on, in your business, what you were paying in 2010 for labor.
Labor materials.
To today, 12 years.
And this looks like, I'm putting this out there because I've had people come and ask, what's the big cost? Well, there's no inflation, but it's like, you know, it's more just inflation.
And I've seen on social media where people will say, again, with ADM down, why are you asking for more money? Well, I can tell you in my personal family, I've had a 20% ADM drop at one move out. And she ain't off the payroll yet, but she's out of my.
Well, definitely.
So I've had a 20% ADM drop in my family. My yard's the same size, but my gas costs more and my lawn mower costs more and my blades cost more. I'm still heating the same square footage, which costs more. I'm still cooling the same square footage, that costs more. If I'm gonna paint, I'm still painting the same square footage. It costs more. So every expense has gone up, whether she's in the house or not does not matter. Now, I'll admit, she's a girl. I save some money on water because I have city water and she had long hair. And so I literally noticed it on the bill when she moved out. But that's the only one that I noticed was water. Everything else has stayed the same, gone up with her gone. That's a microcosm of 5,300 times that in our district in 19 huge houses.
Are you still trying to reduce the number of combo classes as much as possible? Or is that looking like that's gonna be harder?
There's no way to fight it. Again, with the state cutting 10 to 14 positions this year, we can't, I mean, we're not sitting here asking you for 14 extra teachers, 15 extra teachers, again, to stay where we were last year for that. Not much less, knockout combo classes. We didn't even consider that. That's just the world we live in with our inefficient models. We did look at some different scenarios with schools and different things. And one that makes us very efficient, which would just make the whole county mad, had no combo classes. None. If you went to a, if you use facts versus feelings, and you remove all the emotion and you try to do what's best financially and educationally for kids, but you forget all the emotions and feelings and traditions, yeah, you could get rid of them. But.
But again, it would be a big bill price change.
It did come with a, an initial bill problem.
For a mere $200 billion, we'd fix that problem.
It would probably be fixed for the next 30 years, 40 years.
This is Doctor Scannie from the.
120 years.
All right. Well, it's a conversation that we're just gonna, we're gonna continue to have and try to find answers that fit Stokes County. And, you know, that makes sense to everybody as much as possible. You know, so we're gonna do the best we can on this. I'm sure we'll put our brains in overdrive Thursday as we continue to try to make a dent in this. And hopefully we'll come up with some good solutions. I think, thank everybody for being here. I need to adjourn and they need to adjourn.
Do we have to go first? Because y'all closed the whole meeting.
Motion to adjourn. Somebody, in favor, make a motion to adjourn.
All those in favor?
Aye.
We're adjourned.